Welcome. Oh lovely, Justin, I was just about to ask you to hit record, you're actually my guy for that, you know, thank you. Um, welcome everyone. Oh, there you go.
Hello.
Hello, hi, hey Liz, how are you?
Good, how are you doing? So glad you guys having this today, I'm sorry I missed the last one.
Oh no, that's okay, welcome, welcome, welcome. The last one, the last one bugged out actually, if I remember rightly. Yeah, the last one, I was um visiting a friend who came down from Wales. Um and I was trying to kind of put him on to the Forex journey, so I said, you know what, I'm gonna do the training in your house. And um and and because I was out, my, I don't know, everything was going wrong, it was like my internet connection dropped. I got booted out of the thing twice, my phone got stuck in draw mode. It was um, it was not, it was, it was just a weird sequence of events last week, but I'm home today, so worst case, if my phone bugs, I've got my iPad. And if my iPad bugs, I've got another phone, so you know, we'll definitely make it work today. You know what I mean? How are you? How was your week, Liz?
Oh, oh, it's good, thank you very much. How was you guys?
Yeah, good for me, thank you. Yeah, not bad, not bad, not bad.
Can I ask you a question? Before you get started.
Oh yeah, sure, go ahead, go ahead. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, so, I wanna, I personally would like to be a better trader than what I am right now, that's another reason. Why I'm. On New York, um.
Study sessions.
What steps did you take to be in the position that you're in now to be able to um teach us, show us what you have uh learned?
Yeah, sure, um honestly, is consistency, you know, just um every, every opportunity I get to study, I'm studying. Plus, I find that I am in um, I'm in a a good position because I might have more time than other traders who are on this platform. You know, there were some people here who have children, I don't have children, you know what I mean, there were some people there who have other obligations for me. I was able to put this first and be like, okay, you know what, I need to study this. Um and that's not to say that I'm a six-figure trader, it's not to say that I'm a multimillionaire, I'm not by any stretch of the imagination. But at the same time, I'm not far off, do you know what I mean, in terms of knowledge rise, in terms of what I've got, like, I can now see that this is definitely the platform that will take me there, this is one of the platforms that will take me there one hundred percent, so. Um, yeah, consistency, um obviously making sure that you're using the the products that you're paying for, like wow. Making sure that I'm using wow, yeah, and studying from wow every opportunity I get. If it goes two weeks and I've not seen any videos on wow, and I'm paying every four weeks, then I am wasting my money, you know what I'm saying? If I'm, if I've paid for four weeks and two weeks have passed and I've not seen a single video, not one video on wow, then, you know. So really and truly, it should be like every day, or at least three times a week, do you know what I mean, banging out like a little hour on wow, an hour here and hour there. Consistency, study, um and also, as I say, staying plugged in, you know, go to as many of the Super Saturday trainings as you can. Um, the, the Sunday, um, the Sunday trainings as well that come, do you know what I mean, go to as many calls as you can make. Stay connected with other traders, you know, um and and lastly, I would say, um, not over-leveraging as well. I mean, these are all things that we, that we cover, do you know what I mean, but not over-leveraging is definitely a big deal. Um, because if you over-leverage, if you try to be too successful too fast, yeah, if you try to catch a big win, um then with big wins come big losses, you know, so. You should only really be trying to get like medium wins with small losses, as opposed to big wins with big losses. If you have a small account like me, yeah, then you don't really wanna come in and jump in with like, okay, boom. I'm gonna try and earn five thousand pounds in this trade, when, you know, you can't do that, yeah, so you wanna, you wanna take time. Um, and not over-leverage, because when you over-leverage, it's like, it's like you're in an arcade, yeah, and you're playing a video game. Um, and you put in like a pound coin for the game, you know, the, the more pound coins you put in, the less opportunities you're gonna have to lose. If you come with five, if you've got five opportunities to win, then you're less likely to win than if you've got fifty opportunities to win. If you've got fifty opportunities to win, you know, and you're not over-leveraging, you're managing your risk, you just pop, 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 you know, you've got fifty chances to win, the chances of you getting good are a lot higher than if you just come in and you've got right, you know, let's say you've got um five hundred pounds in your account, for, for example, right? If you risk one hundred pounds on each trade, then in five trades' time, you're out the game. Do you know what I mean? If you've got a five hundred pound account however, and you risk five pounds on each trade, then how many opportunities have you got to earn three hundred pounds in one trade? You've got so many opportunities to do that. Just keep trying, keep trying, keep trying, keep trying, boom, I've made three hundred pounds, wicked. Now, you know, fair enough, I might have lost a hundred and fifty pounds on the way, but I made three hundreds, do you know what I'm saying? Now I'm getting it, now I'm understanding, do you know what I mean? It's not, I'm not, I haven't earned like thirty bags in one trade, of course not, you know, I'm taking time, but at the same time, I feel like I've learned at least enough to share with new starters, do you know what I mean, and newcomers. Yeah, which is what today is about, Sunday study sessions, you know, who's here for the first time? Did that answer your question, Liz, actually, first and foremost?
Oh yes, yes, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Lovely. Okay, who's here for the first time? You've got any new first-timers here? I'm gonna have a quick scroll through, see if I can see anybody.
First time.
Hey, lovely, who is that?
Hi, my name is Linda, I'm sorry, I can't put on my camera, I'm out and about shopping for.
Okay, no worries, no worries, and though, well, thank you for plugging in even though you're out and about. You know, that's a good, that's a good attitude, man, that's good energy, that shows that you're, you know, you're here to learn, even when you're out and about and you've got things to do. You know, you're still taking the time to prioritize your education, so I'm grateful for that.
Oh, thank you so much, thank you.
Yeah, welcome, welcome, welcome. Feel free to chime in if you have any questions. Obviously, you may need to look at your screen, because I'm gonna be showing you some things when I share my screen, yeah?
Okay, that's fine.
But I'm sure you guys will be fine. Welcome to everyone, welcome, welcome, welcome. Okay, it seems like we've got quite a fair few amount of people in today, so I'm just gonna dive in and get started. Look at that lovely, that nighting people, beautiful. Okay, um, today, there's my notes, here you go. Today, what I wanna talk about is um other different stages of the market. So, in fact, before we start, let me just introduce myself, uh make sure that everyone understands who I am, why I'm here, and what the intention is for today. Um, so, my name is Nate, as you can see at the bottom of the screen. Um, I've been in this space since September, was my first ever trade. Um, as I, as I always say, as I said not five minutes ago, you know, I'm not a six-figure trader, I'm not a multimillionaire, I'm not there yet. Um, I'm someone who's come to this space and studied, I've applied myself, I've learned as much as I can, I'm winning trades. Um, and I wanna share what I have learned with you. When I first came into this space, I found it quite difficult to um really fully understand or to grasp what I was seeing on wow. Um, as great as it was, you know, it, it just kind of, at first, yeah, I find it difficult to, to understand. Um, I done a training session with my upline's upline, who's Cole. Um, and Cole basically, he broke it down for me in a way that I had never heard before, in a way that I understood. Um, we've got Dr. Brian Stevens in the house, nice one, nice one, King. Um, yeah, Cole broke it down for me in a way that I, you know, had never heard before. Um, and from Cole's explanation, I basically have come along in leaps and bounds, right? Um, I'm now, when I watch the wild videos, now they make a lot more sense, because I understand, because I've heard the, the message come through from someone that I considered to be a PR, someone that was kind of coming up with me, do you know what I mean? Cole's obviously a lot further ahead in the game than I am, don't get twisted, right? But at the same time, just hearing him express it made a lot more sense to me than any of the videos on wow. So now, when I watch the videos on wow, I have a, a, a strong foundation, which has been really helpful for me. Um, so, what I wanna do is I wanna pay that forward, um as I say, I wanna make sure that anyone that this space, these Sunday study sessions, the reason I've created these are for people who are coming into this company, people who are brand new, people who have been here, you know, um and you, and you've just started. The only thing we will ever talk about in these sessions are the fundamentals, the foundation, the fundamentals of trading. I'm not really gonna be going into indicators, I'm not gonna be going into strategy, I'm not teaching, I'm not calling any trades for anybody, okay? All I'm gonna be doing here is teaching you what is a pick, I'm gonna be teaching you what is a candle, how does it work, what is market structure? That's the, that's what we talk about in the Sunday study sessions, yeah, so if you get um any new people come into the company, then I would suggest, you know, you bring them in this direction, they can pick up certain things a lot quicker. Um, and then, once you understand what a pick is, once it's explained to you by a PR, then when you're, you're watching a video on wow, and you listen to um say Justin or whatever, and he's talking about, you know, right, fifty pips and, you know, look at this um resistance here level and it's gonna make a lot more sense to you, because you understand it, because you've been regular at the Sunday study sessions, right? So that's what we do, we kinda go around in a cycle and a rotor, um and we just run through um several topics. Today, the focus is on market structure, quite specifically, the stages of the market. Um, so again, because I didn't, I've got one person, is there anyone else here who's here for the first time, or is it just the one person? Anybody else here who's here for the first time, just let me know.
Yeah, for the first time, my name is Charles.
Charles, lovely Charles, welcome, 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 King, welcome, welcome, welcome. Good to have you in this space, bro. Okay, brilliant, you've got a couple of first-timers, so at least now I know at what level I should be, you know, I can kind of scale it right back when we're talking about stages of the market. Okay, um, so because there are some first-timers here, I'm gonna even presume that you don't understand the, the pits, we spoke about pits um last week, candlesticks last week. Um, and I'm kind of just gonna be speaking specifically about market structure. I'm gonna start by sharing my screen. Uh, here we go. I'm gonna start by sharing my screen, okay. Um, okay, so let's, let's just start off, just so that you guys get the, the basic point. Um, what is market structure? Okay, so market structure can be broken down into, I'm gonna say two words, right, support and resistance. That's what market structure can be, can be broken down into. Um, the, the chart, as you can see, is very random, it does whatever it wants. I've just picked a completely random currency pair here, USD/CNH, I don't even know what CNH is. Um, but I've just picked a completely random um pair just before we started the training today. What is support and resistance? So as the market is going up, right, you notice that it stops at this level and changes direction and starts going down, yeah? This level that it stopped at is called resistance. That's all resistance is. So look, again, the market was going up, it's hit this level, and it's changed direction and gone back down. That level there is called resistance, 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 resistance. Yeah, resistance, clear as that. So when the market is on its way up, it meets resistance at a certain price level. What do I mean by price level? Well, if you follow this here to the right, you notice these two are on the same level, right? We've met resistance at the same point twice. If you follow this level to the right, you can see this is the price level, seven point one four nine nine zero, right? So when price comes to around about this level, it meets resistance roughly. Look, we can see it here again, this one here, same again here, same again here. And we've also, it's met support there, what level was that? That was six point nine four one four zero, right? So we can see, when the market hits this certain level, it meets resistance, turns around and comes back down. Resistance. What's the other one called? The other one is called support. So support is at the bottom. Yeah, it's on its way down, it bounces up, it has met support. Yeah, so price is coming down, it meets support, and then it bounces up, right? Those are the fundamentals of market structure. We do go into market structure a tiny bit more um on the Sunday study sessions. In fact, we're gonna do it today, actually. Today, we're gonna be, we're gonna be diving into different stages of the market. Um, but does everyone feel as though they, they comfortably understand support and resistance?
Yes.
Yeah? Lovely. Okay, brilliant, brilliant, brilliant. Excellent. Um, so the market's very volatile, as you can see, look, look, up, down, up, down, zigzag, zigzag, everywhere, right? But there are certain levels where the market respects slightly more than others, right? And generally, these are levels that the market has respected in the past, so we can see prices heading up to this level, which it has respected in the past. And we can anticipate that it's gonna respect it again, yeah, and it's gonna react. It comes back up again, and look, we can anticipate it's gonna react. Okay, look, it's broken through now, do you know what I mean? It's coming down to this level, and we can anticipate that it's gonna react. You might be wrong, as you can see here, you might be wrong, you might be right, there's no guarantee, as long as you're managing your risk. But the fact of the matter is, there are certain times where you can anticipate what the market is going to do. That is the benefit of market structure, okay? The market, uh market structure operates in three distinct stages. Oh, let me stop animation and, don't eat that, make this, there you go. Right, market structure operates in three distinct stages. Yes, please, thank you. Um, so, the first is obviously a trend. Yeah, market's trending up, market's trending down. Um, what is a trend? Well, trend is made up of um two stages, I guess. You've got an impulse, an impulsive move, right, where the market jumps up or down, it jumps in a direction. Um, you've got an impulse, then you've got, I believe it's called a correction, where the market kind of comes or pull back, it pulls back a little bit. And then another impulse, yeah, and then a little pullback, and another impulse, and a little pullback, and another impulse, that is a trend. Now, trend doesn't always look like that, sometimes it can have one big jump and then a little pullback, you know, or sometimes it can, you know, um move a little bit slower, but still be trending upwards. Yeah, a trend, it doesn't have to look exactly the same as this, but a trend, as you can see, is when, oh, is when the market is trending in a specific direction.
Yeah.
Was that a question? No? Okay, sorry, I think someone just unmuted themselves by mistake. Okay, um, now a trend, I hope you guys have taken notes by the way, because these, you know, this is all important, yeah? Um, so a trend, a trend, um is basically gonna do one of two things. There are two things that a trend can do. Bear in mind, Joe, when we're looking at these charts, the chart, it can't go left, it can't go right, it can't go round in a circle. Do you know what I mean? Price can do one of two things. Price can go, oh, wrong way, price can go up, or it can go down. That's it, that's all it can do, right? So, a trend can either, let's say this happens. What is this? It is either, it is either part of a continuation move, so the trend is gonna continue, right, or it is a reversal. Yeah, it's either a continuation or reversal. That's it, price is either gonna go forward or it's gonna go backwards, right? And our job as traders, I guess, is to manage, is to manage our risk, is to look for the candlesticks, uh look for candlestick patterns that confirm what it is that we know. Um, and to try and find the best time to enter the market. So say, for example, this price here has just dropped down right here, right, and we're looking at this moment here. You can, if you see, for example, um an engulfing candle, brilliant, excellent opportunity now for you to enter the market, manage your risk, and ride this trend on the way up. If this trend were to turn around and go down, so be it, you've managed your risk, you are safe, right? But that is our job as traders, to look for that entry point, um to look for a candlestick pattern that supports the market structure, and to, and to jump into the trading to, to make money. Okay, fantastic. So we've got trends. A trend is either going to continue, or it's gonna reverse. A trend is made up of two um stages, an impulsive move and a correction. Then an impulsive move and a correction. There's a lot of different terminology for these moves. Um, but as long as you guys understand the principle, as long as you can see what is happening, what is, what is called, doesn't really matter. Okay, the other two, one is called, oh, there you go, one is called a range. The other one is called consolidation. Right? So you've got a range and you've got consolidation. Now, in my, in my journeys, guys, these um at first appear to me to be very um similar. They appear to be very, very similar, ranging consolidation, and they are similar, they are extremely similar. Um, let me start off with range. What is a range? So basically, a range is when a price, uh um, hold on, one, two, one, two, there you go. A range is when the chart stays in a certain area, stays within this range. It doesn't break out and go down, it doesn't break out and go up, it stays within this range. Does that make sense to everyone? Can I get some feedback?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, when price stays inside a certain range, a certain price range, doesn't matter what that price range is, by the way. It could be between here and here, makes no difference, yeah? As long as price stays inside a range, once it breaks out of the range, now that's called a breakout, it's broken out of the range, right? But other than that, price is inside a range, it's inside a certain price range, a certain area, right, a certain region. Right, between one and two, it's, it's between this, this area, and this is the range of movement that the price has, it, it doesn't go out of this range. When the market does that, it is called ranging, it's a ranging market. Okay, so, so far, we know what a trend is, and we know what a range is. Um, an interesting thing to point out about a range is that most of the time, the market is ranging. Um, if you consider, we spoke about this last time, if you consider the way a single candlestick is formed, right? So, um, each candlestick gives us five pieces of information, we spoke about this last week. Who was here last week? Who caught last week's session?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Come on. Yeah, only one person? I know that's not true.
I did too.
I caught the week before.
Yes, I did, yeah.
Yeah, you caught last week, last week when we were talking about candlesticks, and we said that candlestick gives us five pieces of information, so you remember, it starts from here, yeah, and then it's gonna go up, right, for example. And then if it changes its mind and goes down, it's gonna leave a wick. Yeah, and then, if it changes its mind and goes all the way up again, it's gonna leave a wick. And then, if it changes its mind and goes all the way down again, it's gonna leave a wick to say where it was, right? Now, that what we've just seen, let me break that down into um into multiple to make it easier. So remember, first it went up, then it went down and left a wick. Then, it went up higher and left a wick, then it went down lower and left a wick. What is this price doing right now? This is all happening in one, on one candlestick. What is that one candlestick doing? It's ranging. Because ultimately, price is starting here, it's going up, it's going down, 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 until finally, we move on to the next candlestick, yeah, which does whatever it does. Does that make sense to everybody? Is there one, anyone who was at last week's session, follow what I'm just, follow what I'm saying there, yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, lovely, 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 lovely. Okay, brilliant. The last one then is consolidation. So what is consolidation? I had to do a little bit of digging on this one, because I wanted to make sure that I, I kind of um explain myself well, right? So, uh here's a definition that I found that I think is really, really handy. A consolidation is a period of range-bound activity after an extended price move. So consolidation is similar to range, consolidation is similar to range, right? Um, because it is a period of range-bound activity, it's like the range, but it's slightly different. I'm gonna show you what consolidation looks like in a minute. Um, I actually was fortunate enough to find it on the first currency pair that I chose. Remember I said I've just found the random currency pair, I saw consolidation on there straight away. I mean, I say fortunate, the market, there's always consolidation on every chart, we'll pick a random chart afterwards if you guys want, um and see if you can find it there again. Consolidation illustrates the lack of a trend in a particular trading range. Prices consolidated, uh it frequently occurs after downtrends or uptrends, and can be seen as a stretch of indecision. So, I want you to think of, um, okay, think of a ball, right? And the ball is falling, it's falling that way, yeah, ball is falling that way, so it's falling down. And then we've got the ground, yeah, the ball is on its way down, the ball is on its way down, and then the ball hits the ground, and as it hits the ground, hold on. As it hits the ground, it kind of splats out a little bit, that's a horrible picture, let me do that again, all right, hold on, it's, it hits the ground, and it kind of flattens out a little bit, yeah, and then it bounces back up. Right? This right here this right here is consolidation. The ball hits the ground and it kind of flattens out a little, a little bit. Does that make sense to everyone? Can everyone understand that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can anyone, can any, can anyone not understand that? Does anyone still have any questions about what that means? I'm gonna go into it a little bit more, but just let me know if this particular illustration is making sense. Or not making sense to anyone, sorry, I should say. No, three, two, one, that's what I like to hear, come on, guys, brilliant. Okay, so, I'm glad, because that made so much sense to me as well, when I said that, I was like, yeah, it's like a ball is going down, it hits the ground, and it bounces. So let me um show you what that looks like in, on a chart, right? What that would look like would be what that would look like would be when price is trending down and it hits this level. See it? Right there. Price is trending down, it hits this level, and it consolidates. That is what consolidation is, yeah, price is coming down, it hits that level, it consolidates, and then it goes back up. Now, this consolidation, if we were to zoom in on this consolidation, right, then it might look like a range, right? It might look like a range. It is essentially a ranging market. But the distinction, I guess the difference, um the, the main difference that I've been able to identify is the timeframe. Because um what looks like consolidation on say a, um, on say like a weekly timeframe, um, what looks like consolidation in a weekly timeframe will probably look like a range on an hourly timeframe. Yeah, because on an hourly timeframe, on a, on a weekly timeframe, on a weekly timeframe, price is doing this, but what that means is every single week, price is going up, down for that week, for the next week, up for the next week, down for the next week, up for the next week, down for the next week, do you know what I mean? So, obviously, price is kind of zigzagging up and down to, to, on a, on a large timeframe, it doesn't look like anything, do you know what I mean? But on a smaller timeframe, you can see it looks more like a range. Um, cool, so we've got trend, we've got range, we've got consolidation. Those are the three stages of the market. I, as far as I'm aware, guys, there is not a fourth, there's not a fourth stage that the market goes into. Okay, so let's have a look at this chart and see if we can find, um, see if we can identify the market in its stages. So, somebody, anybody, what's the market doing here? Let's pick an easy one.
Down trend.
Down trend.
Down trend, lovely. Okay, fantastic, downtrend. Um, all right, somebody, what is the market doing here?
Up trending.
Up trending? Yeah, nice one. Okay, um. All right, here's a good one. What is the market doing here?
Consolidating.
Ranging.
Ranging.
Oh, okay, we've got mixed reviews there. We've got consolidating and we've got ranging. This was the example that I found, actually. You would say ranging. See, I personally would call this consolidating, me looking at this, zoom in a little bit. You know, I mean, as I said, I understand why you could consider it to be ranging, because knowing what each candlestick does, it makes sense, right? This white candlestick, for example, started at the bottom and finished at the top. This black candlestick started at the top and finished at the bottom. This white candlestick started at the bottom and finished at the top. This black one started at the top and finished at the bottom. And then, you know, this one didn't really do much. This one started at the bottom and finished at the top. I can understand why you would say it's in between this range. I can understand why you would say that, right? However, because of how, because of how compressed it is, that's the best way that I can explain it. Because of how compressed it is, this, to my understanding, will be considered consolidation. I'm gonna see if I can find you a better example of a range, if I can find you a better example of a range on this chart. So that we've got more consolidation here, we've got more consolidation here. Let's see if we can, um. Okay, this might be a little bit better, oh. See it? So price, um, price. See it, so price, um, price started, it's gone down, it's come up, it's gone down, it's come up, it's gone down. And all of this is within this particular range. Yeah, it's not like, um, it's not like just this tiny little bit, which is all squished into one. It's, it's actually expanded, it's actually got a bit more expansion behind it, do you know what I mean? It's kind of got a bit of reaving room, it is going up and down within a large range, right, look here again. Yeah, it's going up and down within a large range, as opposed to. As opposed to, let's look at the top here, so. Price was going up, and then look, bang, this is the bounce, you see it? This is consolidation, and then it's come back down, it's gone back up. This bounce here, I wouldn't call this consolidation, I'd just call this a straight reversal now at this point, you know, look, you've. You've got an engulfing candle, let me zoom in a little bit actually, on this. So you see price was trending upwards, it was, so it was going up, down, up, yeah? And then we've reached this level here, which is consolidation, consolidation, as you can see, price is kind of just. A little bit messy in that area, it's not exactly, I wouldn't really consider this to be a range. Because each candlestick is kind of roughly within the same range of the previous candlestick. It's not like it's um candlestick, 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 no, that's not what we're looking at. We're not looking at, you know, like a, a space like that. What we're looking at is candlesticks which are kind of lined up or within the same, within the same area. It's the best way I can explain it, hopefully this is making sense to you guys, right? But to me, this, I see consolidation here, more so than I see a range. Okay, how about this, guys, what are you seeing here? Let's have a look.
Consolidation.
Consolidation.
I'm seeing consolidation too. Excellent, excellent, brilliant, okay, cool. Okay. Alright, what about this, I'm gonna do a little tricky one here, what would you call these two candles here?
Some range.
Uh, nope. Not just, not these two candles, think of it like this, okay, the market's gone up, these two candles, it's gone up again. These two candles, and it's gone up.
Well, uh, the.
Correction.
Oh, oh, oh.
Excellent, correction, yeah, 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 yeah. Perfect, that's right, correction, yeah, the market is in the middle of a trend. Market's in the middle of a trend here, but as you can see, is a pullback, yeah, this is a little pullback or a correction. Right, it's pulled back a tiny little bit, then it's continued to go up in a direction that it was going. There's a name for this, um, but I can't remember what it is. Oh no, I think there's a name and there's three of them, not two of them, but yeah, you know, these different candlesticks, as you guys know, they all have different names, um. But yes, okay, let's pick a completely random chart, because I picked this USD CNH, and I don't know, um. I don't know why I chose that one, so let's just pick a completely random one, let's go for. Okay, NOCKSEC, what is NOCKSEC? I don't know, right, okay, look, and should we go for a larger timeframe? Uh, or should we just stick with the timeframe that we've got, let's just stick with what we've got, come on, what we're seeing? Oof, okay, so because we've gone for the um, for like a, an exotic pair, that's what these pairs are called. The major currency pairs are the ones with USD in them, and the ones with GBP in them. These ones here are called exotic, so they're not pairs that you would trade as often, they're not pairs that are gonna appear and shift as often, for example. Um, but, you know, it's still a chart, yeah, we understand, it's the same principle, there's nothing different here, there's nothing different here. If you can't understand how to read a chart, then you can't understand how to read a chart, do you know what I mean? It doesn't, you know, there are some charts that are gonna be easier to read than others. For example, GBPUSD is probably one of the easiest charts to read, because it's so common, everyone trades it, it, you know, it's really. Easy to read, right? Whereas NOCKSEC, whatever this is, you know, is is not as many people trade it, it's a little bit more kind of jagged and volatile, look at it, right? But at the same time, the chart's doing exactly the same thing, look, we've got price, it's going up. And then it bounces, so we have this consolidation here, and then it drops, yeah, that's it. Price is going up, it hits this level, look, it bounces, and then it drops. Yeah, you can see the consolidation there clearly, can you see the trends clearly? Should be able to, you can see where it's trending, you can see where it's consolidating, let's zoom out a little bit, because the file was zoomed in, I'll zoom out a little bit. And then that will help us to identify some of the ranges. Look, between this price range here, look at how the market's moving, kind of like sideways movement. But within this particular range, between zero point nine 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 two and zero point nine eight seven four, somewhere within that range, yeah? Maybe it's not perfect, but you know, you should get the point, that's all I'm kind of hoping to to achieve here, right? Um, here's another one. You could say between this range, in fact, I would even go so far as to say this line going through the middle separates this one and this one. Yeah, but you can see that the market is ranging, hold on. The market is ranging, it's touching the top, touching the bottom, touching the top, touching the bottom, touching the top, touching the bottom, touching the top. Then it breaks down the bottom, then it touches the top, touches the bottom, touches the top, and then it breaks up again, do you know what I mean? You can see where the market is ranging in between two prices, and then it breaks out of that range, and then heads into a trend. Until it consolidates and the trend reverses, until, and then it starts to range again, do you know what I mean? It's not always as clean as if I were to just draw lines, obviously, it's, the the real market's not gonna be as clean and tidy as that. But you know, you get the point, that the market is within one of three stages at all times, trend, range, consolidation. Trend, range, consolidation, those are the three stages of the market, okay, um. So how can this help us? Let's make this practical, let's make this as practical as we can, because obviously, um, that's the point, right? So, one thing I always say is that when you are trading, what you're looking for is something called confluence. Right, that's my word of the day, that's my, that's my, that's my trading word, actually. Ah, isn't it, the end, yeah, confluence, there you go, confluence, right? So, what is confluence? Um, confluence is a coming together of multiple different things. So, the way I best describe it is if you have a stream, yeah, of water. And then you have another stream of water, and you have another stream of water, let's say that they're separated. They're separated by the earth. Yeah, you've got another stream of water, and it's separated by the earth. And then all three of those streams merge into one big stream. Into one big river, yeah? This point where they meet right here, hold on, let me do that in red. This point where they meet right here, this would be called confluence, right? This is the point where everything merges together and everything agrees. This one says I'm going this way, this one says I'm going this way, and this one says I'm going this way as well. So guess which way it's gonna go, it's gonna go this way, because everybody is in agreement that that's gonna happen, right? That's confluence, okay, with everything is in agreement, right? So how does that um apply to the chart? Well, probably easier to spot on the monthly view, I reckon, I guess, especially because we're looking at a um. An exotic pair. Let's see what I can find. Uh. Okay, yeah, so confluence then, for example, um, would be, let's say, this is the monthly chart, remember, guys? So obviously, we wouldn't really be placing trades on the monthly chart, um, at our stage, not yet. But this is just so that you guys can get the picture, so obviously, this white candle here, all month price was going up, yeah, all month price was going up. Were there any indications that that was gonna happen? Well, there was a couple, um, the first thing that I spotted at a glance is this engulfing candle, right? So an engulfing candle is when the candle on the right-hand side is more than double the size of the candle on the left-hand side. The candle on the right-hand side is engulfing the candle on the left-hand side, right? Here's another illustration of an engulfing candle. And then after the engulfing candle, generally, generally, price continues in the direction of the larger, of the larger candle. Yeah, generally, price continues in the direction, nothing is by force, obviously, but you know, it's a rule of thumb. That is one form of con, that's one thing, right? Next is this here, resistant, um, support level, so price was coming down, then we've met support. And now, I'm expecting price to start going up, because we found support. So that's two, so we've got, we've got support and we've got a candlestick. Now we've got two forms of confluence, do you understand? So, the next thing that I would be looking for would be, preferably for me, would be a third form of confluence. Like, for example, a um, an indicator, um, or a shift call out a trade, do you know what I mean? For shift to call out a trade, that's gonna completely boost my confidence, I'm gonna be like, yeah, this trade is definitely gonna hit, because I think it's gonna hit. And Jeff thinks it's gonna hit, do you know what I mean? So now, I'm I'm doubly confident. Um, there's a good way that you can get ahead of the curve on this, guys, right? And that is by watching the videos, um, that the the traders post. So, um, for example, Jeff, every Sunday, uh, today, yeah? Jeff does like a markup, where he'll look at the charts, he'll be like, these are the charts I'm gonna be looking at this week. This week, I'm gonna be looking at EuroUSD, this week, I'm gonna be looking at um GBPJPY. This week, I'm gonna be looking at that, so you can now look at the chart and you can get ahead of the curves. And then it's like, okay, so I know, if he said he's looking at NOCKSEC, for example, I know that NOCKSEC has been trending down. Has just hit a strong support level and has just thrown up an engulfing candle. So I'm expecting Jeff to say bye, so if Jeff now says bye, then guess what I'm gonna do? Do you know what I mean, I'm laughing, right? That's my, now my third form of confluence. Obviously, if you're looking for your own, um, then like I said, indicators, there are plenty of indicators, there's loads of other things out there that can help. And the news is also a good one, so if you're studying the news for the currency pair that you are studying. Um, so let's say you were um doing GBPJPY, and you were studying the news in Japan. And you're like, okay, this is just happening in Japan, so I'd expect that to affect the currency, plus it's hit support, plus there's an engulfing candle. Bam, do you know what I mean, now you've got more confidence, because you've got a third form of confluence. It's really important, guys, that you don't just jump into trades without that confluence. That's a note to self as well, because I've been doing it all week, honestly, um, just jumping into trades and and missing that trades I shouldn't have been missing, you know? So, definitely be patient with yourself, be patient with your journey, as we discussed last week. And remember, you're looking for confluence, yeah, you're not just expected to see a candlestick and think, great, let me jump in. Or you're not expected to see market structure and think, great, I'm gonna jump in. Okay, so how can confluence help us on our journey? Before we wrap up, uh, let's get rid of all of this, okay, how can confluence help us on our journey? Well. If, for example, you're looking at a ranging market. Yeah, you're looking at a ranging market. And we are currently here, well, look, this is one form of confluence already, isn't it? This is one form of confluence already, because now we have a directional bias. I expect price to drop, I could be wrong, I could be wrong, price could break out and go up, anything is possible, right? But I have one thing that's now on my head, I'm thinking, okay, we have just hit, someone tell me, just support or resistance? Come on, somebody.
Resistance.
Excellent, we have just hit resistance, yeah, we've just hit resistance. So I'm expecting price is either gonna break through that resistance or it's gonna drop down. Yeah, I think it's gonna drop down, that's just my shot in the dark, right? And then what happens? Then I see a, let's say a hanging man, what's a hanging man? A hanging man is a black candle, I think, with like a long whip going down, and maybe like a little whip going up, that one there is called a hanging man. And normally, it's a sign that the market is gonna reverse, right? So let's say I see that hanging man right here, now I've got two forms of confluence, do you understand? Now I can see, okay, look, first, there's this, second, there's that, third, you know, what am I looking for? Right, I'm either gonna find, like I said, either something to do with the news, or in my case, I tend to go indicators, I find the moving average is really simple to use. Um, you know, but there are tons of them, there's the MACD that Jeff keeps posting about, um, there's loads and loads of indicators that are worth studying. But in terms of fundamentals, yeah, we've got market structure and we've got candlesticks. Those are two things that really, guys, we should all be able to understand quite simply. If you are learning to read a chart, then the candlesticks are your alphabet, yeah, the candlesticks are your alphabet. You wanna really wrap your head around the candlesticks, so that you can read the chart at a glance. You could look at this chart and say, okay, look, this chart is ranging, I've just seen a hanging man, so I'm expecting a reversal. Hmm, let me manage my risk and jump in, do you know what I'm saying? And jump in, catch your, catch your money, when it gets to the bottom, you know when to exit, because you can see that the market is ranging. Okay, what about if the market is trending? How will this information help you practically? Well, now you know this is a pullback, what's gonna happen? It's either going to be a reversal or it's going to be a continuation, yeah? Right here, it's either going to continue up or it's going to continue down. But you know, you know now, that this level right here, because I guess of this. Do you know what I mean, you know that this level right here, we can expect something, that's the point, we can expect something. This is a level of resistance, this is a level of support, we can expect something to happen. So now, you're looking for a candlestick to confirm, I think it's gonna go up. So I'm looking for an engulfing candle, do you know what I mean, right here, to confirm that price is gonna go up. Right, let's say for argument's sake, I'm wrong. Right, doesn't have to be the case, let's say I'm wrong and price goes down, and then comes back up to the same level. Now guess what, I'm thinking, okay, um, I I know Carl gave you guys a quick run-through on cat on them, some. Some chart patterns last time, this one now is looking like it's starting to form a head and shoulders. Look, this is the head, this is the left shoulder, and if it goes down, this would be the right shoulder, yeah? So, at this point now. At this point right here, now, I'm looking for a different candlestick pattern. Do you know what I mean, I'm looking for one that's gonna confirm that price is going down, right? And if that doesn't happen, right, because this, it does get like that, and it goes up, and then it kind of consolidates, right? Now, me personally, I'm not skilled enough to trade in a consolidating market. There are traders out there who are skilled enough to trade in a consolidating market, I'm not one of them. My suggestion for you, if you see that the market is consolidating, is to step out a timeframe, so what do I mean by that? Um, well, let's say, for example, you see that the market is consolidating, and you are looking at the. Um, the one hour or the four hour, let's say you look at the four hour, and you see the market is consolidating, right? And you don't know what to do, right, the market's been, it's been trending, whatever, and now it's consolidating, right, what's gonna happen? Well, I would suggest that you zoom out and look at the monthly view, or look at the weekly view. And what you may find is that price was trending upwards and now it's consolidating. Now, what do you think is gonna happen? Now, this changes the complete image of this, do you know what I mean? Because now I'm thinking, okay, it's looking like we can expect a drop here, do you know what I mean? Because now we've, we've hit a level, you know, on the, on the monthly chart, we've hit a level on the monthly chart, I can expect a drop. I'm now back on the hour four chart, I'm now back on the hour four chart, and I'm looking for a level where I can enter the market. You know, I'm thinking, okay, if price, um, if price goes up, hold on. I'm thinking if price goes up, even up to here, oh, my bad. If price goes up, even up to here, I'm gonna enter the market straight away, do you know what I mean, and manage my risk, because I've been waiting for this. Do you know what I mean, as soon as price. As soon as price goes here, then I'm gonna enter the market straight away, because now I've looked at the monthly view and I'm expecting price to drop. Yeah, so I've got one, now I've seen that, um, so I've got a directional bias, do you know what I'm saying? I've seen my candlestick confirmation, I've seen my strong resistance, I've seen the things that I need to see, and I'm jumping into the market. Yeah, because now I've got more confidence that I understand what's happening, because I've zoomed out and looked at the bigger timeframe. If you see consolidation, that would be my recommendation, that'd be my suggestion, zoom out and have a look at the bigger timeframe. Okay, that's definitely what we've got time for today, um, but I'm gonna take some questions, see if anyone's got any questions. Let me just do the eye contact thing, do you know what I mean, get you guys back in the building, hello everyone, hey guys. Ooh, look at the beautiful people, hi everyone, hello beautiful people, good to see you, good to see you. Okay, yeah, does um, does anyone have any questions with regards to the three stages of the market? Okay, yeah, does, um, does anyone have any questions with regards to the three stages of the market? Was that helpful, was it?
Yeah, so that's just three stages you look for. On consolidation, and what's the next one, um?
Range.
Range, yeah, thank you. And that's called confluence, con- confluence.
When it's, when two things are coming together.
When everything is flowing in the same direction, that's confluence, anyone has decided that this is the way we're gonna go. The, the market structure says this way, the candlestick says this way, the indicator says this way. Then you can be confident it's gonna go this way. You know, it could still go that way, because the market is volatile, and something could change. All it takes is for Boris Trump to open his mouth and say some nonsense, yeah, and the market is gonna go that way. Once you have confidence, you can have confidence, do you know what I mean, once you have confidence, you can have confidence, you can be like, okay, it's. Everything is saying it's gonna go this way, for now, so as long as you manage your risk. Don't bet everything on one trade, ever, do you know what I mean, don't bet everything on one trade. You know, just kind of like, manage your risk, and be like, okay, this is what I think is gonna happen, study the market, analyze it. Um, and shoot your shot, if you don't shoot, you will never score. I think that was Augustine said that, if you don't shoot, you will never score, it will never happen. Do you know what I mean, like, literally, you must at least shoot your shot, and then the, the worst case, you'll miss. And as long as you've managed your risk, if you miss, then what's that ten pounds, you know, twenty pounds, depending on your own risk management strategy, yeah, you've not. Lost too much money, uh, for me, five pounds is the most I'm willing to lose on a trade. Um, so, you know, if you guys are managing your risk the same way I am, then if you lose a trade, you've lost five pounds. It's annoying, because the other day, you know, like I lost about four trades in one day. And that's five, ten, fifteen, twenty, and I was like, oh, that was a bad day, I put my phone down, took a breather. You know, start again the next day, it's fine, do you know what I mean, just slow down, um, reevaluate. And remember, you're here forever, and invest, an investor, an investment is not something that you take lightly. It's not something that you, is quick, do you know what I mean, for, the forex market is very volatile, and there's a lot of opportunities to make money. However, the investment process is, uh, it's a process, do you know what I mean, so you play, you, you invest in something. And then you wait for that investment to, to, to take, you know, to take hold, so. You know, there's no need for us to be rushing in this space, it's fine, if you don't win a couple trades, take a breather, step back. Remember that you're learning the skill set, respect the market, man, remember that people study for years to do this. Do you know what I mean, just because we've got a great platform in Shift, we've got an amazing platform, with Shift, right? But at the same time, you know, it doesn't mean that immediately, look how many people join this company and then duck out, because they can't, you know, they can't deal with it. Like, you know, it doesn't mean that immediately you're gonna start making millions, if you come in with a thousand pounds. And you, you invest, and you risk five hundred pounds on your first trade, and you lose five hundred pounds, that's your business. Do you know what I mean, that's not how you invest, that's not how it works, it's not just because Shift says it's gonna go to eight hundred pips. That you should put your whole life, your, your life savings on it, do you know what I mean, take time, breathe, relax, understand how to trade. Learn before you earn, yeah, learn, invest in the learning, invest in the learning. And then once you've invested in your education, the money is a guarantee, the money will come, you know. You are in a space where money is abundant, there is money everywhere, yeah, there is money everywhere, look at this chart, this chart is full of money. There's so much money on that chart that I just showed you, that you alone couldn't take all of it. There's so much money on that chart, do you know what I mean, that you couldn't put a dent in that chart if you tried your hardest, yeah, so. Don't worry about the money, worry about getting good at this skill set, take time, do you know what I mean, take time. Make sure you can earn ten pounds consistently, consistently, consistently. You know, make sure you can earn twenty pounds a week, do you know what I mean, just take time. And then this time next year, you'll be placing one trade that will earn you five hundred pounds. You place another trade that will earn you three hundred pounds, you place another, your friends will be like, what is this, I'm placing trades and I'm losing money. But it's about consistency, it's about patience, it's about, um, discipline, man, discipline, I can't stress enough. Speaking of discipline, I'm heading out, it's been an hour, thank you guys for coming through, I always appreciate you guys.
Not, please, I have one question.
Yes, I, yeah, come through, please.
Uh, regarding the range, um, what do you do, I mean, if the candle stays in the middle. Do you have to wait, wait, and see where the direction is going, or you can jump in a trade?
I mean, the range. Yeah, wait, 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 if the, if the candle stays in the middle, or, and it's kind of, um. Then that, that range has now probably turned into consolidation, if the candle stays in the same place. You know, if the, if it's moving, then it's ranging, it's between a range, but if it's stuck in one place, then it's, it's now consolidating. You know, and that, and when the market consolidates, it means something is about to happen. And your best bet is to look at a bigger timeframe, to try and help you understand what that thing is.
So all you are saying is to wait.
Wait, wait until you have, wait until you have two or three clear forms of confluence. Yeah, wait, wait, don't, there's, there's, uh, do you know what? The market gives us confluence so often, that there is no reason ever to enter a trade without confluence, there's no reason. The only time you will enter the market without confluence is when you're being impatient, is when you are being greedy, me as well, yeah.
You lose the money.
I'm being greedy, or I'm not being patient, I can't bother to wait, I'm going out somewhere, let me just jump in the trade, and hopefully it will work. And, and it might work, it might not, but it's not how you trade, that's not how you do it.
That is gambling.
That's exactly, that is not how you do it, so. As long as you're patient, and as long as you manage your risk, and as long as you wait for confluence. Then you are a trader, do you know what I mean, you're basically, it's just a matter of, of consistency at that point, as I was saying to Liz at the beginning. It's literally just a matter of consistency past that point, and no one is saying that, you know, you're gonna earn thousands and thousands and thousands of pounds in your first month. Some people do, I've seen people come into this space, and they, and you know, they come with a lot of money. They invest, they earn a lot of money quickly, and then they lose a lot of money quickly, unfortunately, it's really unfortunate to see, but the reason, I believe. You know, is because they're not managing their risk, they're jumping in with more than they can afford, and it's great when you win, but it's horrible when you lose. Do you know what I'm saying, if you can understand the investor mindset, take time, be patient, do you know what I'm saying? Manage your risk, be slow, that's it, wait for confluence. If you're, if you're watching the weekly timeframe, then it could take three weeks, it could take a week for a candlestick to finish forming. It might take three weeks before you see the candlestick pattern that you're looking for, it could take six, seven weeks. Before you see that one pattern that you've been waiting for, and as soon as you see it, perfect. If you're studying the, the four hour timeframe, then every four hours, there's a new candlestick, it could take. Hours, days even, do you know what I mean, to see that one candlestick pattern that you're looking for. If you're studying the hourly chart, then it might not be on that one day that you see confluence, you know, it might be on a different day. Or it might be on a different, um, a different, um, currency pair, where you see confluence, do you know what I mean? But on the hourly chart, it doesn't mean every single day, there is a, an opportunity on every single chart, yeah, so. Take time, be patient, and just study, the market is guaranteed, the thing is, yeah. You guys, we know, when, when you look at the market, when you look at the monthly view, you see that it's very simple to understand. All it is gonna take for you is patience, just, just take time, and you will definitely understand it, you will definitely understand it. I'm so confident, that there's nobody here, that there's no reason that anyone shouldn't. And if you're still struggling, guys, then come to the Sunday study session with your questions, speak to your upline, ask your upline questions. Feel free to reach out and shout me questions, I'm not great on Telegram, cause I, I only really pop in and out of Telegram, but. So, still, shoot me a question on Telegram, I'm definitely gonna see it, do you know what I mean, within the week, and I'll reply to you. I'm more than happy to do that, honestly, yeah, so that we're a community, we're a team. You know, if you guys are not winning, then this is not gonna be enjoyable for me, do you know what I mean? Um, so I wanna make sure that everyone here is successful, is winning, and lastly, what I would love. Is if, when I bring new people into this company, that you guys are hosting the Sunday study sessions. And you can help my new people to level up and to, and to develop, you know, that's the community that I'm intending on trying to build. That's what I'm trying to, that's the legacy I'm trying to leave in this space, that's what I'm hoping to, to bring in, I want. To make sure that any new people that I bring in will have this platform, and they can rely on it, do you know what I mean, they know Sunday study sessions are there. And at least your first month is not gonna be anything like my first month, do you know what I'm saying? Because your first month trading, you, you'll get a fast forward, that's what I'm hoping for.
Nay, I just wanted to add, I just wanted to add, um, something that I've got from Jeff Kirkland. That was really, um, interesting, on the twenty eighth of June. And Sunday night, if everybody watch, um, go back and do his recording, he, he went through, um, one indicator, um. V dub, a script that you add onto your charts, it's very interesting. So for everybody, yeah, it's, it's a script that you, um, it tells you how to, um, upload it and add it onto your charts, it's a binary as well. And, yeah, add it onto your chart, but you have to go and listen to his, um, recording on the twenty eighth of June. So if everybody wants to, it's another kind of indicator, I've been using it all week, it's really, really interesting just watching it. And it goes, it goes, you went to jump into the, um, trade to buy or sell.
Thank you, Sandra, thank you so much for that, um, input, yeah, appreciate that. Yeah, guys, definitely, make sure you're plugging into the trading on wow, these Sunday study sessions are not what you are paying for, that's, I really need to reiterate that as well. You know, this is something that I've decided to do off my own back, just because I wanna give back as I've received, yeah? Um, but at the same time, what we are paying for is wow, what we are paying for is Shift. What we are paying for is Mind Hub, what we are paying for is Oracle, so make sure you're making use of those platforms, as Sandra said. You know, Jeff is posting videos on a regular, where he's offering strategies, where he's teaching about candlesticks, a one hour video. How long have we been here today, one hour, so, you know, you sacrifice one hour, do you know what I mean, give it one hour. And make sure you're studying the videos on wow, make sure you're studying, uh, Mind Hub, Oracle. You're, you're communicating with the traders, you're asking all of your questions, and you're sincere, you're diligent, you're actually learning. Cause if you're just here to, you know, to, to copy and paste and make money, then it's, it's only gonna last you so long. You know what I mean, that's what I would say, you really need to understand what you're doing, so that you can really make the most out of this space. Okay, that's me, I'm gonna head out, guys, so, thank you so much for coming. Um, have I missed anything in the group chat, in the chat, let me just have a quick look at the chat section, see if there were any questions. Thanks, Nick, useful, um, video, Jeff, amazing training, guys, lovely, oh yes, thank you, Salome, Salome's posted the, um. The previous videos, oh, thank you so much, guys, I appreciate that, lovely technicalities, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, guys, yeah, yeah, have a great, um, productive week, yeah, and I'm gonna see you next Sunday.
Thank you, Nat, thank you very much.
Thank you, Nat.